Good evening, everyone. All right, the special meeting of the Board of Education for November 7th, 2023 is called to order. All items being considered this evening are posted on the PPS website under the Board and Meeting tabs. This meeting is being livestreamed on PPS TV service website and on channel 28. Livestream will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the district website for replay times. All right, welcome. Before we get started, just want to share a few reminders. In order to ensure safety, please keep walkways and aisles clear. We also ask you to please be considerate to those around you and keep signs below chin level. In order to keep from exceeding occupancy level, we have set up an overflow seating and viewing area outside. I don't think we did that though, did we? No, okay. So we don't have to worry about that. All right, so we're going to begin with the consent agenda. Board members, if there are any items you would like to pool for discussion, we will set those aside for the next week, next time we meet. Ms. Braschow, is there any changes to the consent agenda?
No.
Board members, are there any items you would like to pool? All right, do I have a motion and a second to adopt the consent agenda?
Second.
Is there any board discussions on the consent agenda? The Board will now vote on Resolution 6796 through 6798. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
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 All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Student Director Silverstein, please indicate your vote.
Yes.
Awesome. Are there any extensions? All right, the consent agenda is approved by a vote of 620 with Student Director Silverstein unofficially voting yes. All right, first, next we have the first reading of policy rescission. Director Burt Edwards, would you like to introduce this item?
Thank you, Chair Hollins. The Policy Committee for the last several years has been going through our policy manual and rescinding policies that are no longer needed or that have been replaced. And this is one of those policies. It relates to, it's actually a strategic plan, which was adopted before 2005. We have a new strategic plan. It's not appropriate that we put a strategic plan in a policy. And for that reason, the Policy Committee is recommending that we rescind that specific policy.
All right, the policy proposed to be revised or rescinded, excuse me, will be posted on the Board's website in a public comment period of a minimum of 21 days. Contact information for the public comment will be posted with the policy. The Board expects to hold a second reading of the revised policies, which is a vote to approve them on December 12th. All right, next we have an update on the Center for Black Student Excellence. Superintendent Guerrero, would you like to introduce this?
Thank you, Chair Hollins. Good evening, Directors. You'll recall in 2022, the Board of Education adopted Resolution 6150, which affirmed a phased approach to the design and overall plan for a Center for Black Student Excellence. And it called for regular updates on the progress being made towards the implementation of a Center for Black Student Excellence. Here back tonight to provide you with another regular update is Camille Idadabo, Interim Director for Innovation in Black Student Excellence. Thank you, Camille.
Take your time, take your time. I just got to say it's lovely seeing you guys tonight. Absolutely.
Okay, for the record, my name is Kali Thorn-Ladd. I'm co-chair of the Steering Committee for the Center for Black Excellence.
Good evening, I'm Winter Johannes. I serve as the Executive Director of the Albina Vision Trust and co-chair of the Center for Black Excellence Steering Committee.
And I am Cheryl Proctor. I am proud as your Deputy Superintendent, but I am also the executive sponsor for the Center for Black Student Excellence.
Good evening, everybody. Camille Idadabo. She and her Director of Innovation in Black Student Excellence. May I have some technical assistance up here? Or do you all have the presentation ready for? Maybe let's give it a moment.
Well, while it loads, two things. One, I should have mentioned, I'm also Chief Executive Officer of the Children's Institute. And I'd be remiss, before we start, if I didn't say that the obvious, that this meeting is coming on the heels of children being out of school for the last three weeks. My son was amongst them. And we've learned from the pandemic that when children are out of school, it has a disproportionate impact on black students who have been underserved for a very long time in the district, which is why we're here today. And so while I'm glad that an agreement has been reached, and I thank all who are involved in reaching an agreement, and I applaud the teachers at Jackson, where my son goes to school. They have done a great, great job. This negotiation was not focused on the success of black children and ensuring that they thrive in schools. And I never heard a focus on black students and black excellence in any of the negotiations. And so I am here, we are here, because we are committed to their success. And my sincere hope is that all of the people that were on the picket lines protesting on how we need excellent schools will also be standing in support of the Center for Black Student Excellence and understanding how critical it is to ensure that all students truly thrive. Thank you. So we've had a process. We have a steering committee made up of leaders from the community serving, black-serving organizations that have been working alongside the Portland Public School District to envision how we build a Center for Black Excellence and a Center for Black Student Excellence in Portland Public Schools. And we have been able to make progress in assembling a board that is made up of both community members and community leaders, as well as district members and district leaders. So Winter will give some context about where we are, but we're excited. It has taken us a bit of time to identify leaders to serve on this Board of Directors. And I'm happy to say that I think this is probably one of the first co-led efforts by community and district to ensure that our students are thriving.
Right, so as Kali has shared, we're really glad to see this incredible Board of Directors, which represents a significant step forward in standing up the Center for Black Excellence. We also have been really thankful for the leadership of Dr. Proctor and Camille, and whom we found trusted partners as we create this brand-new structure. So I want to make sure to acknowledge their participation to date. What, you know, Kali has said is exactly right. We know that public education will continue to be redefined. And as that happens, we can't afford for the well-being of black students to be lost in the renegotiation and redefinition of what it means to serve. And so in doing that, and if I could get the next slide, please. In addition to standing up the Board, we've been working on the staffing. And even inherent in the staffing update, you know, we explored a few models that really got to the heart of what the relationship should be between this independently stood-up entity, the Center for Black Excellence, and the school district. And we came back to a few core priorities. One is that what we really seek is a partnership where we are equal partners, as opposed to stakeholders, and one that recognizes that the sum of all of the partners is greater than any individual organization that will be at the table. And so in that spirit, we explored looking at co-director models, as well as an independent external director that will report to the Board. We are proud that we have found a director for the Center for Black Excellence. And this person will, you know, will have their own announcement in a few short weeks. So I won't say who they are, but how they came to this process is really important for you to hear. This is a person who saw the opportunity and decided to leave their job on the East Coast, a high-paying, really prestigious job, to come to Portland, Oregon, a black woman who said, "I believe that Portland, Oregon is where black women are coming to make things happen." And I believe, and who said, "I believe that the leadership of the superintendent, the school board, this broader Portland community, the collaboration of the community organizations creates a really special opportunity here." So we are really excited to welcome her to Portland in January. And it gets to the heart of one of the challenges in our community, which is that even when we educate and prepare our black students to lead, students often want to leave because there is nothing more to contribute here. And so the fact that the existence of the Center for Black Excellence is drawing black excellence, world-class talent to Portland specifically to serve this community is one of many signals that this is important and that we can't afford to think small. And so as we move forward, there will obviously be a lot of engagement and ongoing commitment, but we cannot afford to waver on that commitment. And it reminds me that the reason all of this came together is out of recognition that there is a half a billion dollars of investment that's coming into Albina from Portland Public Schools that will radically shape both the inside of our classrooms and the neighborhoods around it. And for the very first time, we will be leading an effort to define what it means for us to have nice things and to not tear out our roots in the process. And so this will be a really, really painful and sometimes ambiguous process, but we need to remember why we're here and to remember that the Center for Black Excellence exists to integrate all of the efforts, all of the strategies, all of the resources, so that for the first time, we can do right by black children.
Next slide, please. Okay, so as many of you will remember, we took the better part of a year or so in a design and engagement process. And back in the spring, we got to an inflection point after the last update, where we needed to do a pause and reset within the community, particularly around alignment within, again, to Winter's Point, the capital projects in the Albina neighborhood. And that materialized into us hosting three workshops as a part of a series to galvanize the best thinking of the community around how we problem-solve and find some potential sites for the Center for Black Student Excellence. And so our community did a lot of interesting thinking and came up with all sorts of generative ideas.
And so you see on the screen some of the ideas that were generated. We have eliminated some of those options in the course of our conversations as a steering committee and with the district. And so you'll see Saban and King, and we want to make sure those schools are intact. We don't want this to be an add-on. What we heard very loudly was that it needed a standalone space. And so we have been exploring spaces while that has not been finalized. We don't have that to present to you today. We are committed to having a space, and we do like the idea of having a learning lab element to it. So we're still committed to that component.
Next slide, please. So just, just as a recap, a recap of where we've been. So in the fall of 2022 through the spring of 2023, we engaged in a community co-design vision for the Center for Black Student Excellence you all will remember from this past May. There was also a lot of discussion about how we thoughtfully consider the way all of these capital projects, so the Center for Black Student Excellence, the Jefferson modernization and the Harriet Tubman relocation, work in coordination to ensure an aligned approach and that we take the burden off of the community. As I alluded to, there was a pause and reset. Over the summer, staff had been working diligently on investigating the various sites that emerged out of the community engagement. And as we move into the fall and winter, we are excited about the options that we've been considering. And so there are a number of negotiations and conversations and things that have to happen. But we are hopeful that by the end of the school year, or before then, we will have a site for you all as Board members to make a decision on. Next slide, please. And so also as this extended, just as this extended work, we've been thinking about the things that we could prioritize this 23-24 school year. And a couple of the things that I just want to surface for you all is that we are moving some elements of the visioning plan into further design and implementation. And so, one, Dr. Proctor, do you want to jump in here at all? Okay, cool, we can tag team it.
Excellent, thank you. So one of the areas that we are looking at as a focus is culture in the classroom and looking at how we can ensure that lessons are coming alive culturally for our students, that they are able, all students are able to experience the richness of black culture and all that it brings as far as beyond awareness, but an embracing as well. We want to look at emanating that culture, of course, from the home. We're looking at parent and caregiver excellence consortiums, student affinity groups for leadership and identity development. And those are some of the design aspects that we are looking at focusing on for this particular school year. As far as systems level, we want to continue the work of being really thoughtful about space and the coordination of physical space. As we look towards building a Center for Black Student Excellence, looking at the Harriet Tubman site selection, and also the Jefferson modernization, the Center for Black Excellence will continue to have a voice in these processes, engaging with community and bringing community voice forward. And also looking at investigating the possibilities of an HBCU, Black Educated Pathway and satellite campus. We've had some initial conversations that are quite promising, looking at a model that's happening in LA, at how it is that we could partner with, 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 how we could partner with organizations to ensure that we are able to work with HBCUs and identify spacing that we can utilize for a satellite campus. This way, we are building black excellence right here in the community. We are building a pipeline of potential educators and also building, you know, a work, a pathway for our black students to continue their education with a local HBCU option. And also then beginning, beginning the initial needs assessment and design for a digital infrastructure when it comes to ensuring that all of our students have equitable, meaningful access digitally across our city. And how do we ensure that we are partnering again with our city partners and our community leaders to ensure that is happening across the board?
So as we come to a close, last slide, please. There are a couple of things that we just want to highlight as continued engagement opportunities for our community. So for one, as Dr. Proctor mentioned, we have a number of design teams that will be joint with staff and community participation. And so if any of the previous design teams looked good and you're interested in addressing culture in the classroom, if you're interested in addressing how we design a black parent caregiver excellence consortium and the type of programs connected to that, and if you find yourself interested in helping to design the infrastructure around student affinity, leadership, and identity development, we invite you to join a design team. We are going to launch officially in January, so feel free to email me. And then lastly, we are interested in continuing this communal effort around problem-solving and having community checkpoints. And so we're also moving forward what we're calling a Space Matters series. So it's the thoughtful, come on here. So it's just, we want to be thoughtful about, again, how we keep our pulse on the way that physical infrastructure supports the community experience. So thank you all, Board of Directors. Any questions?
Any questions? Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our next item on the agenda is approval of the agreement between Portland Association of Teachers and Portland Public Schools. Guadalupe.
And before I move on, just to thank you again to Camille, Kali, Winter, and Cheryl for your work and continued progress in this important strand of work. Chair Hollins and Directors, as I think everyone's aware, just a little more than about 48 hours ago, PAT and PPS leadership teams arrived at a tentative agreement that's here before you this evening. Walking us through highlights of this agreement are our Chief of Human Resources, Sharon Reese, and our Senior Director of Employee and Labor Relations, Genevieve Rowe. I want to thank them in particular, but especially members of the PPS bargaining team. If you could raise your hand, there are many, many of you who provided content expertise, subject matter knowledge over the last more than 10 months. So for all their efforts on both sides, bargaining teams, their work in this area. But for now, I'm going to turn it over to Sharon and Genevieve.
Good evening, Directors, Student Representative and Superintendent. So before you tonight is a three-year contract between the Portland Public Schools and Portland Association of Teachers. PAT represents our very important group of educators that includes teachers, special education educators, social workers, school psychologists, counselors, speech-language pathologists, and many more. The Teachers Union represents the largest group of employees at PPS. This group of educators is responsible for growing and developing approximately 45,000 students across the city. There are a few highlights from the contract changes that we want to talk to you about tonight. Educators upon ratification will receive 13.8% cumulative cost of living increase over the next three years. In addition, roughly half of all educators will earn an additional 10.6% increase from yearly step increases. We've also replaced the mandatory student suspension language with language that supports intervention and responding to student needs, while also ensuring the safety of students and staff. Our collective focus was to respond to areas that may contribute to disproportionate discipline for our black and brown students. There's also new language that creates new class size thresholds that were not previously part of the agreement, and a process for resolving class size concerns that involve impacted educators, school leaders, and sometimes parents. The new contract establishes an article for special education that did not previously exist. It's an article that represents the district and PAT's collective commitment to serving and supporting our students with disabilities that receive special education services. Additionally, it commits $20 million in capital funds for projects that will include temperature mitigation and maintenance issues. It adds 15 minutes to the school day for elementary and middle grades beginning next school year. It increases minimum teacher planning time by 90 minutes every week, from 320 minutes to 410 minutes for elementary and middle school educators, while also adding planning and grading days for all levels. It triples the district's rapid response team that supports mental and behavioral health needs in school communities. It expedites our hiring process so we can be competitive against other regional districts. And it includes student instruction makeup days for the lost time. Our whole school community was excited to welcome our students and educators back yesterday. The photos remind us that our core mission is high-quality teaching and learning. It's now time to turn our focus back to the children who've been waiting for their trusted adults to be in school with them.
Thank you, Genevieve Sharon Reese. Good evening. Also before the Board this evening is an amended calendar for the school year reflecting student instruction makeup days. It's a priority of the district throughout the negotiations and during plans for strike recovery to preserve our student instruction time. The good news is that we have dates for every missed student day. The challenge is that the PAT strike lasted so long that there were only bad and worse options for our staff, students, and families. So this is how we prioritized these good, or not good, and worse options. We did prioritize full days over adding 15 minutes each day. 15 minutes each day was not workable. It would not have made up the lost time, which is currently over 3,600 minutes, and would have caused significant and maybe even unresolvable scheduling issues. So we had to go with full days. We prioritized front-loading makeup days in the first semester over the second semester and over extending the school year. All of our secondary schools run on a semester schedule. Making up time within the first semester is important to cover in curriculum in those first semester classes. This current semester is also our high school seniors' seventh semester. Seventh semester grades and course completion is tied heavily to college admissions for our seniors. High school students also need time before April to prepare for May AP and IB tests that earn them college credit, as well as being on track for high school graduation credit completion. In light of these concerns and other considerations, with the understanding that there were no great options that we had and only options that would be disruptive in some way, shape, or form, before you is a calendar that converts the first week of winter break to student instruction days, converts two professional development days to student days, and uses all four of our previously existing inclement weather days on the calendar. In a state with one of the shortest school years in the nation, in a generation who knows far too keenly the impact of closed schools and the heightened and disproportionate impact of closed schools on our students of color and students with disabilities, this calendar makes up for every missed student instruction day. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 6799, 2023-2026 Agreement Between Portland Association of Teachers and School Districts?
Sorry.
Number one J., Monoma County, Oregon.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Braschow, is there any public comment?
There is. Sarah Purdy and Jorge Sanchez-Bautista.
Of course, I'm not going to be rude. Lord, how's everyone feeling today? You know, I like asking everyone how they're feeling, just because I care. Good, that's good, thank you. Okay, good evening, everyone. My name is Jorge Sanchez-Bautista, and I'm a student leader. My name is Jorge Sanchez-Bautista, and I'm a student leader. I had the honor of previously being the student liaison for the Portland Association of Teachers. I want to start off by saying that we, as students, are glad to be back in school. We would like to thank the school district and the teachers' union for coming to an agreement. But I am here today representing and speaking on behalf of thousands of students who have a message for the school board. When the announcement came out on Sunday evening about us having school the next day, I, along with thousands of students, demonstrated different emotions, of course. Some anger, some stress, and some joy. The number-one thing that I've gotten from most students, though, is frustration. Frustration about the school district taking its time after months of negotiation and then finally talking once the community showed up, as well as frustration with our fellow teachers about how 99% of them decided to go on strike and abandon the class caps in the end. Students were glad to picket with their fellow teachers and advocate for some of the things they themselves had dealt with, but in the end, we were disappointed. Class caps didn't happen, and we had to get more days to make up for the time we had lost due to the fault of both sides. Students never voted for the strike to happen, never were brought into bargaining to talk for themselves or in the conversation about how to make up for the lost time. You made a decision for the thousands of students in PPS. You could have gone at least one student, such as Frankie, as a student director, to come and be the voice for the students, but it did not occur. With students not being brought into any of the conversations, a survey was made asking students how they felt about winter break being cut and what they would prefer. Since then, more than 5,000 students have responded, and the numbers continue to grow. Almost 1,000 have left comments, which I read so that I could speak and understand my fellow peers. The top options that the students want to see instead of the cut are adding time during the day by 15 to 30 minutes, having an extra week in June, and using one to two days of winter break instead of five. Having school on MLK Day was also voted on, with more than 1,000 students saying yes to school and having it be a day where we learn and honor Mr. Keen. These are the options PPS students would prefer instead of our winter break being cut. Taking away our winter break isn't an option. Folks have plans, have to decide whether to stay or go. Having school during a time when the majority of everyone is busy is just a waste of classroom time. Others have to work, such as myself, because we need income. The majority of teenagers in the city, state, and country have or have had depression. Winter break is where students get a break from everything that is giving them stress and anxiety. Winter is also the time seasonal depression comes. You may or may have gone depression as school board members or from whatever, but you aren't a high school teenager in 2023 who dealt with COVID, a pandemic, a teacher strike, and so many other issues. I ask you, as school board members, parents, and grownups, to hear and think of the students when you vote. I yield.
Thank you.
Oh, you've done this before. Good evening, everybody. My name is Sarah Purdy, P-U-R-D-Y. I just, you know, I'm going to reiterate some of the things that were said earlier. And first of all, say that I am a huge proponent of public education. I come from a family of educators. I was an educator myself for seven years. I also have many family members that are on the district side and in the administration. So I do, I'm quite familiar, and again, I'm a huge proponent of public education. I have two students, or two kids, my nine-year-old and 12-year-old. One of them is at Stevenson Elementary, and my 12-year-old's at Jackson Middle School. The strike was difficult on all: educators, administrators, parents, children, families. I understand that. I don't think anybody in this room doesn't understand that and doesn't understand all sides of the situation. There was a lot of uncertainty waiting day to day, getting, you know, updates every night as to whether we would be back in school. And that took a heavy toll on my kids, and I know a lot of other families because it was just way too close to COVID. So once again, we were back in that situation. When we got the text on Sunday, 11/26 at 4:00 p.m., super excited to be back in school. But the first thing I saw, and I will reiterate this, is the December 18th to the 22nd, those days being taken away. I immediately looked at the calendar. We were less than three weeks out. And my family, many other families had plans, have plans, can't be canceled, monetarily absolutely cannot be. I think the biggest thing for me is, in this span of seven and a half weeks, my kids will be out of school for not only 11 days, but 16 days. And that's a heavy toll. And I think that I, you know, I'll go back to reiterating what was said before. You know, we weren't even asked as families and the community. Nobody surveyed us until the survey came out that night, and my 12-year-old immediately was on that Google survey. She was one of the 5,000 that answered it. I think that's really disappointing. I think I talked to several teachers today at Stevenson, and a lot of them said that they weren't even asked for any input. And to me, that just, it's really a hard pill to swallow after a really rough time and coming into COVID and then the strike and then this. I think it's frankly a slapstick kind of sloppy decision on everybody's part. And I'm hoping that there are other alternatives that can be explored. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, if I can, I just want to respond to you, too, because I know it takes a lot of effort and just guts to get up and speak. And I just want to acknowledge that you've been heard. And I think all, everyone all around needs to do a better job about listening to our students. Excuse me, I'm exhausted. And, you know, and I'm not trying to defend anything, anyone, but it was a situation where, you know, it was the eleventh hour, and people are trying to make a decision and take into account everything. And it was a lot to handle in terms of including people who were like working parents who needed some time back so that they can, you know, that struggled with, you know, during the strike and working with their kids at home. So, but I do understand the stresses caused. I, myself, am a parent. I asked my 10-year-old what she thought about this, and she said, "Meh." And that was my guiding light. And that wasn't really much to go on. So, but I do think that we do need to do a better job to listen to our students because they are a wealth of knowledge that are overwhelming, just too often goes untapped. So, thank you.
Yeah, go ahead. That's all public comment, right? Yeah.
Yeah, I, well, all of us, when we saw the dates, what else can we do, you know? And it was, as Director Wang said, the last hour. We just wanted to get it done. But it seems to me that we can change it. It sounds like you've got all the day, you were mentioning enough days if people are willing to go into summer. And we also have thought, gosh, we've missed the days at the beginning of school. We have to make them up at the beginning because it's, especially for young children, it's the new stuff. But if people aren't, a lot of people aren't going to come. Or I also got an email today from an SEIU member saying, "How are we going to do this?" We've been told to take our vacations at breaks, and now we've made plans. And now what will we do? So I think we really didn't think about it enough. And did you put out the survey? Who put out the survey?
Me and a group of students did do it.
I was kind of thinking, thinking maybe we should do a survey, but...
To answer, if I may, to add to what you're saying, students, like, because they were mad, they started thinking of like everything, like, and like actual students who like are never involved in these type of things, like advocacy, nothing like that, they're like, hell, no, I'm not doing this. And so they started thinking like, what about flex? What about Saturday school? What about this? What about that? So there's like other options, but I put like the options that I thought of thoroughly and also asking the teachers' union about other options that they had discussed with the bargaining team, but were never agreed upon. So I added those in the survey to ask the students instead of the teachers, so.
Yes, and we looked at, because they had two other dates, Martin Luther King Day and the first day of spring break. We decided that would, spring break would really mess up spring break with one day. But MLK, we kind of were, you know, is that going to be good or bad?
I can understand MLK Day, like, just because like it's MLK Day. No one wants to have school on MLK Day, and like, that's disrespectful and questionable. But if there's a way for us to have school, but also like honor and like learn more, because there's definitely students in, like, out there that aren't fully educated about Black history or anything like that. But if we can use that day to educate ourselves, that would be amazing. Because like I know so many students right now that asked me about MLK, like, if we had that, how can we like make sure we learn about it, but also at the same time not be like rude and disrespectful about having school on that day? But like, it just kind of depends if that happens and like what it'll look like. If it's like a presentation, if it's doing an assembly, something like that.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for your testimony. Any other board discussion? Or do we want to have PAT come up and give a testimony? If you guys are, want to give a testimony? Oh, you're here.
Come on over. Hello. My name is Angelo Bonilla. I am the President of the Portland Association of Teachers. I'm sitting here with Samara Bockelman, who is a counselor at Beaumont Middle School, as well as a member of our bargaining team. Thank you for allowing me time to speak. I wasn't planning on doing so. So, thank you. You know, tonight, our union ratified our agreement. We had over 94, we had 94.7% of our educators' vote. And we had, just pulling out my numbers. Yes, so we had 90, excuse me, 93.4% of our members voting, and 94.7% of those educators voted to ratify the contract. We know that this contract is a big step forward for Portland educators, but we also know it's just one step towards the goal of great public schools for all. We understand that there are lots of things that are outside of the control of educators and administrators and the school board that impact our student learning. And I was elated to see a letter from the governor today, a press release, that outlined next steps following the resolution of this strike, which includes a statewide action plan in order to support the social-emotional health needs of students in school settings, a partnership with the legislature in order to establish minimum teacher salaries and review funding for schools, as well as creating an Office of Transparency within the Oregon Department of Education to make budget information more accessible and easier to understand, drawing from models in states such as Arizona, Illinois, Michigan, and OD's own ESSR dashboard. So one thing that we knew during this whole process was that anything that we did here in the biggest city and the biggest district of the state of Oregon was going to impact the rest of the state. And not only are we proud to have finally gotten to an agreement after almost 12 months of negotiations, but we are also proud to be able to bring attention and the light to the issues that are not just happening in our district. The Oregon Education Association put out a report during and after COVID around disrupted learning and how the learning disruptions through COVID closures have not ended there. That disrupted learning continued day to day because the needs of our students were not met. And so when we talked about the possibility of the strike, we really had to think about what the impacts would be on our students because the memory of COVID closures is so present. And we understood that we were taking a risk, and it was a calculated risk in order to really bring these things to light and push for better conditions for our workers and also for our student learners. We understand that we were disrupting learning, but we understood that we were disrupting disrupted learning. And the goal was to get to a point where we could ensure that students had high-quality education and that our educators had the working conditions they needed to provide that quality education. When it came to the return-to-work agreement, being in those rooms with the superintendent, with Genevieve Rowe and Young Lee, as well as our mediator and John Borzos, who helped us with this negotiation, we found that we were really in a tough spot to make sure that we recovered the student days. But our original proposal did have a set of days that we could make up in addition to adding 15 minutes to the student day. Our understanding was that that was not a plan that was acceptable for this body. And so we, in the hope and the spirit to get our students back as soon as possible on Monday, agreed to the dates that the district put forth. And so one thing we did bring to light was the survey that Jorge had shared with us. When they first messaged us during those negotiations, the question was, how do students give feedback on these dates that the district has put forth? And my response was, email the school board. They're the ones that are going to vote on it. Make sure they know. And the response we got back was, we don't think they'll listen. That's why we're coming to PAT. So we made sure to lift that up for our students to make sure that when we got to that room, we said, "Hey, can you please make sure the board understands that students are saying this is not going to be what's best for them, that they want from the survey at the time, wanted to have that mix of days as well as lengthening the student day?" And we understand that that is going to be a pressure on the system, especially with transportation, and understand that we have 15 minutes that would be added to all schools so that stagger would hopefully help alleviate some of that pressure. There's a lot of stuff that I know y'all have to think through that we don't necessarily know or are privy to. But I wanted to make sure to acknowledge the work that our student leaders have done throughout this whole strike and our parents and our communities. We had, I got to sit in a room with 20 student leaders while they asked questions about bargaining and our proposals and what we were working towards. And the opportunity to hear what high school students, as an elementary educator, are thinking about and wondering about was just amazing. And I hope that we can create more systems that ensure student voices are not just added as a way to say that we have a student voice, but heard and acted upon as they are the ones who are, who own the future. We are just keeping it warm for them, sometimes too warm, as they talk to us about green energy. But I think it's really important that they have that say. And just to the end around the class size caps, I think that was one of the biggest fights that we had throughout this whole negotiation. You know, our educators understand that we held the line on class size caps for 10 months and two weeks, and it became clear that there was no settlement possible with class size caps still in the proposal. And we had to make one of the many difficult decisions as a bargaining team to find other ways to provide the workload relief and support students and educators when they're in schools so that they can get the support that they need and that those decisions are made at the school level. So we are super excited to, I'll stop talking so y'all can get to the vote because that's what we're all really excited to see. Because once this is ratified by the board, and now that it's been ratified by the educators, we can start seeing a path forward. And we look forward to supporting our union partners in their negotiations coming up and ensuring that they have the support and solidarity that they've shown us throughout this whole, this whole experience, so that they can also get the wages and working conditions that they need to be, to take care of their families. So thanks for the opportunity to let me speak. I am rambling a little because I wasn't prepared, but I appreciate the time. Thank you.
All right. Any board discussion, thoughts?
Okay, so are we voting on the whole thing, including the days that we're going back?
The reentry.
Reentries, okay, right word. So if we like everything except the reentry, we should probably vote no.
Well, no, you don't want to vote no on all of it.
No, I don't. I don't want... I don't want to vote no on all of it.
But I think there is, you know, if there is, could be some discussion, um, I must look at sharing about discussion on if we can look at different things for the days. I was one of the big proponents of keeping MLK Day, um, sacred for, you know, for my family. It's always been a day we took off even before it was a holiday. And so, but no, listen to the children and, and hear from the students, you know, I can, I can, I can move on that, um, as well. So is there any thing that we can do or still have opportunity to do to, for the days stuff?
Sure, I mean, a lot of plans are underway, um, however, and a lot of communications have already gone out, right? Um, I don't think we've received, uh, the survey, uh, at this point, but one of the things that we talked about internally is what about doing the first four days of winter break and Martin Luther King Day? So that was part of those discussions, as you are aware. I do think that that's something, uh, that we could switch without too much, um, disruption. It's disruptive, everything is disruptive. I think one of the things I would say is that adding to the end of the school year doesn't work because it doesn't get, doesn't add days for seniors that came up.
Because it, because why?
It doesn't add days for seniors. So the options in Cape Five tend to be easier. The options in secondary tend to be very, very difficult.
So we saying we can do four days of the break versus the whole five?
Sure, we're looking for eleven days. One of the days that we had discussed and then decided to not use was Martin Luther King. And what would make the most sense, given those discussions, and what is the least disruptive, is to take that Friday.
Is spring break an option?
Uh, spring break is challenging for a couple of reasons. One, it's in the second semester. Um, two, we're taking a group of kids who just had, um, a month off. We're going to be in for three weeks and then have one or two, uh, right, weeks versus all of, uh, second semester, there's almost no break at all, except for spring break. The other issue, um, is that the later you go in second semester, um, and I'm sure our high school, uh, um, experts could speak to this more eloquently than I can, um, but the impact to, uh, high school, I'm going to stop talking because Margaret's going to speak more eloquently than I will, or at least.
I see your hand up there, so I'll get to you in a second.
Good evening, Board, good evening, Board of Directors. Margaret Calvert, I'm, um, one of the assistant, uh, assistant superintendents, working with secondary and, um, multiple pathways to graduation. One of the real, um, I know that, one of the big considerations that we were talking about is implications for particularly our seniors. So this is a group of students that entered high school during the pandemic for their freshman year. They have now experienced the stoppage in the middle of their senior year during college applications and completing and preparing for, um, the next step in their academic careers. So the, the consideration about moving things past the first semester is a challenge, um, for their learning and also for, as, um, Chief Reese mentioned, seventh semester transcripts are very important for college applications. The other part is moving, um, any learning later, uh, impacts both, as also Chief Reese mentioned, uh, AP exam preparation and IB exam, which ultimately prepares students to earn college credits and impacts not only their high school career, but then also the post-secondary, um, processes and also impacts potentially financially students that are, um, transitioning onto college. So those are some of the considerations. Um, as Chief Reese also said, um, changing the end of the school year does not support seniors, um, for that reason. And, um, uh, that even the three days that we've added at the end of the school year, seniors will be done at that point. So those are a lot of the primary reasons and rationale for thinking about returning to first semester as much as possible.
All right, so, gentlemen, you had a, you had a question? Go ahead.
Okay, um, over, I'm going to say specifically, two thousand nine hundred and thirty-one students said for the fifteen to thirty minutes adding to the day. Two thousand five hundred and seventy-nine said MLK Day. One thousand four hundred and sixty-three said one to do, one to two days of winter break instead of five. Fourteen thousand fifty-eight said have an extra week of school, which, you know, I just put that out there. And then school on May twenty-seventh, and that was supported by twelve hundred students. And four hundred and sixty-eight said nothing, leave it how it is. And then other was remove flex days for the first couple of months as we're going to really just need to focus more in class instead of using flex to catch up, as most teachers are really extending some of their assignments or overall just, um, not like pushing it, just like letting it be. But, and then everything else is negative comments.
Can I ask you a quick question about how the question was asked?
So the question was asked, uh, instead of using half our winter break, how would you like to make up the lost time? And I said, student support majority of everything else, such as like the planning time, um, the extra days in June, and I believe everything else except just the winter break. Winter break is the only part where students are in full disagreement. So I mentioned that it would be five days, so where can we make up those lost five days into something else? And they saw that if it's MLK and we use two days of winter break, that leaves three. And then those two days, we could just use, uh, add like fifteen or thirty minutes of each day until we come up with that time. Uh, how I distributed the survey was, um, I talked to friends and peers, of course, had them spread it out. Uh, during the strike, there was a little advisory sort of strike crew, um, of students, which are in that last row. There were a couple of strikes, strikes, student strike leaders from each school. So each high school had one or two, and their goal was really just like promoting the youth involvement. And so I had them contact, get in, um, get in contact with their friends and peers from their school, talk to clubs, talk to the ASB affinity groups, clubs, like everything at your school. And so I was at the top distributing that, and then they distributed that, like, so it goes on and on. But yeah, all that, and within two days, we got five, five thousand three hundred and forty-six responses.
Awesome, awesome. Thank you for that. Thank you.
And the most is actually Franklin over with thousand.
Oh, okay.
Well, that, that's your school, your school.
All right, any other, um, board comments, discussions, thoughts?
Not me. It's not me. As a, as a preacher, I just know to turn the mic on and start talking. Eventually, somebody in the back will figure out what needs to happen, but I never have to lose a flow. But again, uh, I guess the only question on the table, what some of the colleagues are trying to get to is, is it possible to vote on, vote on the, the bulk of the, what we have on the table, the contract with the, um, with PAT, um, and then come back to the calendar days, or is it part of a whole? Now, honestly, I don't want to do that, um, but it's about, and I shouldn't say but, but means disregard everything that I just said and focus on what I'm about to say. And so I have to correct myself, and I do that to teach myself not to do that. However, um, if the consensus of the, of the board is trying to move in that direction, then I want to make sure that there is a, a, a legal auspices or that we're not violating, which is why I would look, um, to nobody but Liz. And she can tell us if this is a legal thing, and if it's, if it is, then we move on. If it's not, then someone else will need to say this is what you would need to do, like submit something else or make an amendment. I don't know, um, what that is.
So from a process perspective, the, the board can amend the resolution to cover part, but not all. There is a negotiated agreement, the strike settlement agreement that includes these days, that's negotiated with PAT. So while the board approves the calendar and has the statutory right to approve the school calendar, there is a negotiated agreement with PAT.
So because there's a negotiated agreement, does that mean that we would have to start this process all over again with them?
I wouldn't say all over.
Because I wouldn't want to do that at all.
No, no, the, the, the collective bargaining agreement is its freestanding agreement that you can vote on tonight. The, if you were to, uh, want to pursue a different calendar than was in the, uh, strike settlement, I do think you need to have a conversation with PAT before doing that.
So can we, I'm sorry, can we vote on it now and then have that discussion later?
We can figure out how to do that. So you could give authority to the district to enter into an agreement that would cover certain days, and if agreed to by PAT, the district could implement that, execute and implement that agreement.
Okay, I would also like to say and go on record, um, that even if we decide to do this and that's the way they want to go, I will not sit with, um, fifteen minute increments. I just can't do it. I, I can't do fifteen minutes at the end of the day, um, and, or fifteen minutes at the beginning. I am, I, I would be open to trying to figure out a different day, um, you know, different, different days of that sort, so. But again, I'm one vote.
All right.
I have a question. Um, I was just wondering, like, I don't know, at least at my school, I heard a lot of students saying, like, it was a survey for people who were frustrated. So do you think like the results at all are like skewed, you think, um, in terms of like students who like were fine with everything wouldn't vote? Or like, I don't really know, like, about the process.
So when I, sorry, when I was distributing the survey to students and messaging like ASB accounts and clubs and everything like that, all I simply said was like, hey, would you be open to sharing this, encouraging students to, to take the survey? Nothing was like, give this only to angry students, give this to students who don't want this. Like, it was just simply like getting student feedback, and that's like all I ever care for. I don't choose sides or anything. I just like want to make sure there's some student involvement or youth involvement. That's like one reason why I started like being part of the strike, because PPS, I don't really know how I was going to get involved with PPS, but with PAT, you know, I know Ms. Bonilla, and I'm, I'm a teacher helper, I'm a teacher's pet, I'm going to say that. So, so I can connect with my teachers and they'll like, yeah, of course. And well, teachers want to see their students helping them out during the, when it was during the picket lines, so, you know.
I want to say thank you also for doing that and for coming here tonight and speaking out, like, this is exactly what we need, and I think you're kind of paving a path for other students.
Of course, thank you.
Thank you.
I also want to thank you too, and I also want to let you know that there are districts around the country that have two student representatives on the board. So, and, and there's, and they vote too. Yes, that's correct.
Well, we'll get, we'll turn around for that, we'll turn around. Well, let's focus on this first. This is, this is more important right now, you know, winter break. Of course, thank you, thank you, Director.
Yeah, I just want to, um, put a little voice out there. As a former high school teacher, um, I think one of the issues I have with the fifteen minutes, I mean, I'm open to, to whatever discussion, but one of the issues about fifteen minutes for high school schedule is that it would effectively had added only like four or five minutes per class, which wouldn't be, you know, imagining as a high school teacher, wouldn't be enough for me to make up lost learning, right? And so that was, that was one of the big considerations. The other thing I also want to kind of shed light as we're, as we're talking debating this is that there were also a lot of other voices that may not have been represented, uh, represented in terms of, um, you know, we had a lot of working parents who struggled during the strike to, you know, hourly, you know, they're out, you know, working for hourly wage and, and had to stay at home and, and needed some time to kind of make that up. And so there was a lot of back and forth debate about, um, having the first week of winter break because it offered a, a chance for a lot of people who really struggle, who needed to make up some work, to have a chance to make up that work. And I think that was also a huge part of discussion as well. And I just want to voice that out because, again, like, I'm open to debate, but I want to just make sure that those voices are also heard as well.
All right, thank you, guys. Any other comments, questions, thoughts before we, uh, go to the vote? Go ahead.
Okay, well, since this isn't something that I can vote on, um, I just want to like state for the record that if I had a vote, I would be voting yes. Um, and then is it okay if I read what I? Um, so first of all, I want to say that I'm grateful for everyone's hard work, not only the time devoted, but the emotional labor that this took. There is no winning because students have been losing this whole time. I said this before, but I want to say it again. In theory, we should all be on the same side. We are a district, a team, and to be frank, I'd like to see us act like one. The replacement days are the hot topic, and regardless of your opinion on them, it is an issue that students were not more involved in the decision or at minimum more aware. My personal opinion is if that, is that some of the frustration we're seeing would not exist if people understood how decisions were made in the district. Transparency, transparency now and transparency in the future. I truly appreciate the explanation of how the replacement day decision was reached, but I wonder if in the future this could take the form of an ongoing update. Before decisions are made is when there is the most opportunity for change. Even if specifics or definitive decision can't be provided, information about proposed options or the timeline for the decision is incredibly valuable. Us students want to be involved from the beginning. Again and again, we hear it's too late. We're tired. We just want to be informed. I went to picket lines and I spoke with picketers. I spoke to people who did not support the strike. I spoke to those who were undecided, and surprisingly, they all had something in common, a thirst for knowledge. The information that was available was convoluted, inflammatory, and we witnessed the community's trust being whittled away. What we do need to do is move forward while learning from our past. My ask is for PAT and PPS to put out a joint statement, clear, unbiased, and transparent.
So a joint statement about the days?
No, about the entire situation, just informing the community, because I think a lot of the information that's been presented has been one-sided, and it makes it really hard to look for that information when all you're able to find is coming from one side. Um, and at this point, I think we just need to present the facts and not add anything about that but just the facts, and then let people draw their own conclusions.
I'm sorry, what? Just, I'm still not sure where we are, if it's possible to pass this thing and still perhaps make changes.
So what we're, so what we're going to do is we're going to go ahead and pass this, but we're going to give directions to the district to look at alternative days if possible.
Great.
Thanks. I, um, and specifically on the days, I, I, I'll get some broader issues in a second. I, I, I could potentially support, you know, the one switch of sort of one day for, for MLK Day if, if we wanted to. I am concerned about anything bigger than that. Again, the options, I think, as our staff have said, were bad. Um, and, you know, I think we took a, you know, an attempt to, to, to take all the needs into account. I think, you know, we're hearing from the folks who are impacted negatively by this decision. We're not hearing from the folks, as, as Director Wong has said, who maybe appreciated this. We're not hearing from some of the high school students who maybe, you know, were grateful for this. So again, I just want to be careful as we send out a communication telling people what's going to happen. They make their plans, they change their plans, and then all of a sudden, if we come back and say, well, maybe we're making a different move. So for me, one day would be okay. I think a larger switch than that wouldn't. I'm going to vote yes on this collective bargaining agreement today with our educators. I think, you know, there are some upsides in this contract, there are some downsides as well. Most importantly to me in this contract, um, we were able to provide our educators with a thirteen point eight percent cost of living increase over the next three years. As pointed out by staff, combined with the normal step increases, about half of our educators are going to see salary increases of over twenty-four percent during this contract. That's a sizable increase, but I want to be really clear, I would love to pay our teachers even more. When I got on the board four years ago, one of the first questions I asked was what it would take to give our teachers a twenty thousand dollar raise. I was told it would not be possible unless we fundamentally reform the way we fund education in Oregon. We haven't done that yet, and I'm going to get back to that point in just a minute. In addition, this contract also increases student instructional time in elementary and middle school, provides consistent middle school scheduling, gets rid of the mandatory minimum student suspensions that were so disproportionately harmful to our black and brown students. It expedites our hiring process so we can continue to recruit the best teachers out there. And we put a new focus on class size that I'm hoping will do a couple of things. Bring more collaboration between do a couple of things. Bring more collaboration between administrators and teachers at the classroom level, and also allow for a broader conversation about class size at the schoolwide level. These newly created spaces for conversation can help elevate class size issues and problems that may need to be addressed. They can also help educate our community about the constraints we face in both space and funding, as well as the intentional decisions we have made to focus resources on our neediest students. And this is where I want to pivot a moment to an issue of racial equity that I feel was lost during this bargaining process. First, I want to note that Portland Public Schools does not have a systemic issue with large class sizes. Our average class size is around twenty-four. That's lower than most medium and large districts in Oregon, and it's generally pretty low for public schools, period. We do, however, have some classrooms that are overcrowded. This is usually a result of high enrollment in a particular school, and it shouldn't surprise anyone that our higher-performing schools tend to experience increases in enrollment. When families decide where to live, the quality of schools is a major factor. In addition to natural migration within the city, class sizes are also impacted by our budget decisions. And this is something else I want to be really clear about. This superintendent, with the strong support of this board, has intentionally focused resources on our neediest students. This means we are sending significantly more per student to our title schools and low SES schools, increasing classroom support and driving down class sizes in those schools. We're doing this intentionally because that's what our racial equity framework and strategy requires, that we focus on those students most in need, the students who cannot read or write at grade level, who arrive at PPS with significant trauma or limited English proficiency or any number of other issues. That means they're not starting at the same place as our other students. And we owe it to them, both as a moral issue, but also as a way to strengthen our overall community in a way that benefits everyone. We owe this additional support to them. Unfortunately, this discussion about class size over the last few weeks and months didn't seem to take much of that into account. There are exceptions, of course, but many of the complaints about large class sizes come from our higher-performing schools with high enrollment. And I want to be really clear, those parents are doing exactly what they should be doing. They're advocating for their children. But we need to be very careful, because given our limited resources, to the extent we bring down class sizes at a high-performing school, we may be required to take those resources from a lower-performing school. This is what we have to avoid, and this is why hard class size caps were and should remain a nonstarter, because they would shift millions of dollars away from our students most in need. And I want to be clear, they would shift millions of dollars towards the zone that I come from. So just to be really clear about how this would impact the district, it's worth sort of diving into those numbers. I'm really hopeful that those school-wide class size committees are going to highlight the resource and space constraints and also involve parents in this important district-wide equity discussions that we have as a board with our superintendent every budget cycle. There are lots of other positives to this contract, but I want to get to sort of my main point, and that's, what is the takeaway we should have from the last four weeks of disruption, acrimony, and lost learning time for our kids? The takeaway is this: We're having the wrong fight. Everyone on this board wants to pay our teachers more, significantly more. Everyone on this board wants our teachers to have the necessary planning time to do their job well. Everyone on this board wants our teachers to have smaller class sizes. And we did get some of those things in this contract. We also got a contract that we cannot afford. And we cannot afford it because the governor and legislature have failed to adequately fund education in Oregon. Full stop. I want to be very clear about the following points. This strike is a result of Governor Kotek and the democratically-controlled state legislature failing to do their job. Support for public schools in Oregon has been steadily declining since the passage of Measure Five, but we cannot continue to blame a poorly-designed ballot measure from thirty years ago. In this last legislative session, there was never a serious conversation about funding education at the level that the state itself says is needed for our students to thrive, the quality education model. During the campaign, I asked then-candidate Kotek about funding at QEM, and she said, "That's not going to happen." When Education Secretary Cardona came to visit Portland, two of my board colleagues asked Governor Kotek about getting to QEM, and she said she wasn't even sure we could get to $10.3 billion. That's the level needed just to maintain current service levels. In the end, Salem handed us a current service-level budget. Meanwhile, our educators were understandably demanding something transformational, something we just could not afford within a current service-level budget. That was the source of the tension, and it's the reason we could not agree during ten months of bargaining, and is the reason our teachers went on strike and our kids missed three weeks of school. So you also have to imagine my surprise when those same legislators and that same governor demanded that we give our teachers the transformational contract they were asking for. And I was even more surprised when PAT leadership allied with those same legislators and defended the $10.3 billion funding level as sufficient. That was a level of political gamesmanship that honestly I did not expect. It also set back significantly any push for education funding reform because it allowed our legislators to do what they do best: pass insufficient budgets, point at school boards, and say, "Do better." So I'm done with that. I've been pushing hard for increases in education funding since I got on the board, but I've been doing it in a very nice, polite Oregon way. I was warned against saying what I'm saying tonight about the governor and our local delegation, because it might make them mad, because I might lose credibility. And I want to be really clear, my credibility doesn't matter in this process. I'm not looking to make friends, I'm not looking for higher office. I'm looking to make sure the state does its job and provides what our children need in order to thrive. We know what that is, and it's time for our state officials to actually do it. And I hope that every single person who emailed or texted me, thirteen hundred texts, thank you, every single one of them, all those people who had fun at Bring Your Lama to Work Day, Dolly's going to join me at the dais for a while, I hope every single one of them who asked me to give teachers everything they were asking for, I hope they focus that same level of energy on Salem. So now we have a contract, or I hope we have a contract tonight, I'm going to vote for it, that has a lot of very good things in it, but it is one that we cannot afford. We're going to cut from administration in order to pay for some of this contract. I believe those cuts are going to be felt in the classroom, albeit indirectly. We're also going to cut from needed school supports and classroom supports. And in the end, there is no way to cut $120 million from our budget over the next three years without making strategic and targeted cuts to our educators. And those reductions will absolutely leave us worse off as a district. In the end, I don't believe this is a transformational contract, and I don't believe it was ever going to be because the state of Oregon has not provided enough educational funding for true transformation. It's a contract with some wins for both sides, and it's a contract that's going to require very painful, perhaps even devastating, cuts to staff and programs that matter to our community. It's a contract that I believe could have been achieved at the bargaining table, and it makes me sad to think the learning loss and disruption that our kids experienced, along with the disruption to the lives of our educators and our entire community, was in service of the wrong fight. So to that end, I'm going to finish on an optimistic note about what I believe is the right fight, because there is a fight we need to have, and it's a fight we need to win. And I laid out this path to PAT leadership a year ago, and I want to lay it out for everyone again tonight. First, we need to demand that Salem get rid of the cap on our local option levy, not just tweak it, not just adjust it so we can maintain the status quo, but lift it, because the status quo is not working. Now, I don't know, I want to be really clear, I don't know if voters in Portland will vote to raise our tax levy. Taxes are very high here, and the last few weeks have shown a profound level of mistrust towards PPS that exists in our community. But the local option levy by law can only pay for teachers, and an increase in that levy could pay for most, if not all, of the increased cost of this agreement. We need this to happen in the short session next year so that we can decide whether to ask our voters in May for an increase. Two, we need continuous loud and constant demands for education funding at the QEM level. Never again will we let our legislators off the hook by begging for crumbs at the end of a legislative session, please let us have $10.3 billion, please just let us have that money, and then have them use our own words against us to absolve them of any responsibility. And we also need our big donors in this state, including our local and state unions, to withhold campaign donations from any candidate for state office who doesn't fully support QEM funding. During this strike, state leaders said that the number we asked for matters, so let's make sure it actually matters. And third, we need to move the political conversation about what is possible in this state. And yeah, I'm talking about kicker reform. For twenty years, everyone has said it's impossible. We are about to spend $5 billion back to Oregon taxpayers because of the kicker law. That funding would have been transformational for every school district in Oregon. And the reason the state has that extra $5 billion is because wealthy Oregonians and businesses are doing better than they ever have, and as a result, they're paying more in taxes than expected. The boom for those people is real. But instead of capturing it and making the boom real for others, say, our educators, we're giving the wealthy a tax rebate. So let's stop having people tell me it's not possible and start figuring out how we can make it possible. And if Salem doesn't want to do it, we can put together an initiative. And trust me, if we could harness just fifty percent of the anger that was directed towards this board over the last few weeks and redirect that anger towards the kicker, I guarantee you we'd have that thing overturned next year. These are the actions we can take that would actually transform education at PPS. And I've been saying these things to state and local leaders and union leaders and community members, but apparently I have not been saying them loud enough, and so you can expect me to say them even louder as we go into this next year. I want to close with a post-Thanksgiving note. I am very thankful for every teacher in this district. I am very thankful for what you bring to the classroom every day. You have the most important job in our community. I want to make it a job you look forward to every day, and I hope you'll join me in fighting the fight that will make that possible.
All right, Andrew. Okay. All right, Director Bremetworth.
Thank you. I want to start by acknowledging the many hours and the commitment that both the PPS bargaining team but also the PAT bargaining team brought forth to really advocate for priorities and advocate for students. I had an opportunity to see it up close the last several weeks and know that people brought, sort of, their hearts and their passion to the work and the advocacy. And that's one of the reasons I'm going to be a strong yes for tonight's agreement. And I'm going to be a strong yes because it allows us, it allowed us to reopen our schools yesterday and return students and teachers to classrooms all across the city, which brought lots of joy to many, many families, students, and teachers. It also invests in our educators with a three-year contract, increasing their compensation and addresses many important issues for educators, students, and the school district. As a PPS alum, I had many PPS teachers who shaped who I am. And as a parent, I'm appreciative for those teachers who taught and cared for my kids during my family's eighteen years in PPS. There's nothing more important in terms of student learning than our teachers, and we know that very acutely after the last month. Unfortunately, heading into our negotiations, PPS had a fixed budget. And with that fixed budget, we went as far as we could go. And in terms of addressing the compensation that was requested, and I'm going to agree with Director Scott that if we could have done more, we would have. As it was, we actually went further than we can go, and we're going to need to make up the increases that we have committed to with cuts in other places over the next three years. Board members have a fiduciary responsibility to our students, employees, and broader community, and we really did our best to, I think, eke out every last dollar that we could to really send a message to our teachers that they're valued and respected, and we know that the cost of living has been increasing beyond what the legislature has given us. So we did our best, and we have a fiduciary responsibility to our students. For me, a few highlights of our contract are as follows. The three-year compensation increase, also substantially increasing the planning time, both for teachers, and we did that without reducing instructional time and increased planning time. Sometimes people would say, well, that's something for the teachers, but actually, it's really important. It's not just for the teachers, it's for our students too, because teachers who have planning time can do a better job for our students. So I think that's one thing that I want to look at as, like, a win-win for, a huge win for teachers, but also our students are going to benefit from that as well. Also, this contract removes the mandatory minimum five-day student suspension and replaces it with trauma-informed and mental and behavioral health supports for our students, which is going to be really important. If you look at the data, the discipline disproportionately falls on students of color and also special ed students. So looking at how we change, how we support students who need it, and how we support educators, this contract makes progress in that space. This contract also commits $20 million in existing capital funds to address heat and cold and all those other building issues that, if you've been a parent, a student, or you're teaching our schools that you know are aging school buildings have. In addition, that fund, it gives educators a voice within the building about the priorities, about what needs to be addressed, and that's really important. It also expedites our hiring process so we can be more competitive with the school district. Noting today that the governor held a news conference about school funding, I'm just going to say, and this is maybe just amplifying somewhat of, Director Scott said that we're going to need more than talk at the state level, we're going to need a lot more action, and we're going to need a lot more than an action plan. Since 1997, I've been a parent leader and advocate at the state and local level for better funding, whether it be local options, the local income tax, state school funds, bonds. However, even with a lot of advocacy, and it's been done with other parents, teachers, principals, school staff, community members, our labor partners, even with all that work, and it's been twenty-five years of advocacy, Portland Public Schools, our students and staff, continue to be short-changed. Between ballot measure five and the statewide equalization that happened in the late 90s, what essentially that did is shifted resources from PPS and the Portland metro area statewide, and that was a good thing. It actually helped other districts, but what it did is it didn't recognize that Portland had a higher cost of living and that in that statewide shift, really, the PPS has been short-changed for the last twenty-five years. I'm going to hope and advocate with others as we go down to the legislative session that it's time that the legislature address this cost-of-living differential that's in the metro area, and we'll definitely want to be joining with parents, educators, and staff in Salem as we push for more equitable funding. But it's been twenty-five years, even though there has been many measures passed, this inequitable imbalance for PPS has continued. In addition to approving the contract, I'm going to recommend the board also start working on four issues. One, the first would be class size and workload issues, and we have an opportunity with Director Wong's Student Success Committee to review data about class size and other school workload issues so that we can make informed decisions as we move into the overall budget and also the school staffing levels for this next spring. And I think we need to bring the sort of wisdom of what's happening within our schools to better understand not just the class size, but the other issues that create workload, issues for teachers, but also impact student learning. So I'm hoping that's something we pursue. Second, school building investments and the 2024 bond. I recommend the board work with educators in the school communities to build on the work that was done in Article Nine around our aging school buildings and the health and safeties of our classroom. We can identify and prioritize targeted investments in the short and medium term in our elementary and middle schools that may not be modernized for another ten to twenty years. The heat, cold, leaks in the roof, the repair or replacement of blinds for school safety can all be part of the upcoming bond planning, and we can build on that $20 million in capital funding that we earmarked in the MOA that's directed at health and safety issues. Third, as a board, we should follow-up, have follow-up work sessions on the Secretary of State audit recommendations. While many in the board weren't here during that audit period, only thirteen of the fifteen recommendations were partially implemented. There were specific recommendations around administrative benchmarking, administrative spending benchmarking that did not occur, as well as contracting and administrative expenditures. This is an opportunity to reexamine those recommendations and implement those that were not fully implemented. And then fourth, as a board, we should begin our budget work immediately with the superintendent and the CBRC or the Community Budget Review Committee. If we know we are going to make significant budget reductions, it'll be important to have those in-depth discussions now, set our priorities, link them to our board goals so that we enter the formal budget process. We've done the necessary pre-work with the larger school community about what those reductions might look like. And I know that we all, our goal would be to keep them as far away from student impacts in the classroom as we can, but we should start that work now. And just in closing, I do want to note that I've been asked in the last couple of weeks about some of the tactics that occurred during the strike, and whether it was disheartening and dismaying and dismaying to see and experience attempts to intimidate, bully, harass board members. And because I have been part of this PPS community since 1966, when I headed off to Glunko as a fourth grader, or I'm sorry, as a four-year-old, I know that those actions that happened the last couple of weeks are not representative of Portland teachers. And I, as I started in my comments tonight, really value what our teachers bring to the classroom every day, and I know we're all in it together. And I want to thank the many individual teachers who wrote, called, or texted me to convey the message or offered to help clean up the graffiti and vandalism, that this was not representative of our school community, emphasis on the "our." So in closing, this is just a challenge, this has been a challenging and stressful time for educators, families, and staff. There's a lot of healing that needs to happen. I'm going to be very supportive of this contract tonight and that make sure that we implement both the spirit and the letter of the contract in a way that supports our educators and our students, and make sure that that happens in a way that we all know that we're all in it together. Thanks.
Thanks. Director Green?
Oh, I'm good, my guy. I'm just waiting to vote.
All right. Director DePaff?
Thank you for offering. I don't have anything to add that hasn't been said, but I did want to reiterate that the tactics that were used to intimidate board members, community members like myself that were born and raised here for the most part, were really disheartening. I had people saying that the kids weren't learning anything, and they did learn a lot, and they learned how to engage in civil discourse through the keyboard and not through conversation, and through vandalism and not through talks. And that worries me for the future. So yeah, I'm feeling much to your point that I'm hoping we can come together and heal after this. I don't know how that will be done. I can say I will start with myself and start to heal my heart and to start to have conversations with students again, educators, PAT members in the future, and just start to rebuild those relationships.
Thank you. You're up.
Yeah, I'm going to be supportive of this contract. I also want to speak about the targeting of board members. I have a kid at home, and this was a safety issue in my part and a threat because, anyways, I'm going to stop right there because I'm going to say some angry stuff. But, you know, just want you to know, you know, I've been a PAT member for a long time, longer than a lot of people have been running for the PAT. I was a teacher, I came to this job to support teachers, and that's why I'm here. I also, not a fan of those 90-minute staff meetings, I'm sad that that didn't go away. But, and I have a personal vendetta against those, so I just let you know. Let all of you know, if I was going to be a one-issue candidate, that would be it. But, yeah, I just want us to move forward and start healing. We, there are things that cost a lot of money, but one thing that doesn't cost money is when all staff and our teachers and our staff that work in our schools can feel supported. And that's what I'm here for. That's, we need to really work on changing our culture to be one of support, one that we are working as a team, because the only people that lose when we argue are our students. So it's time to turn it around, and it has to start at top. It has to start at the top, but we also ask that everyone help. Thank you.
All right, so I guess that just leaves me left. Oh, go ahead, Patty. Go ahead, you're up.
Okay. I am so thankful to be finished with bargaining. It's been a long and tiring process. I want to thank our bargaining team, which spent many hours working on issues that we hope will improve the education of our students. As you can imagine, I received many emails asking me to support the demands of the teachers. I also support the demands. There was nothing in those demands that the teachers do not deserve. However, as a member of the board, I need to think not only about how much the teachers deserve those demands, but also how to pay for them. And there lay the dilemma. It was not easy. In the end, we did not hold the line on finances as tightly as was needed. Essentially, the strike forced us to make concessions. I guess that is what a strike is meant to do, and it worked. That means we're going to have to cut positions and programs in the next budget cycle. And the rest of what I said in this paragraph was said much more eloquently already by Director Scott. But what it means is, schools in Oregon are not funded, sorry, funded to the Q E M. And hopefully, parents, teachers, PAT members, community members, board members, administrators, and anyone who cares about education will work to lobby the legislature for an amount closer to the Q E M. And of course, we also need to support school levies and bonds. And now I have a more personal note. As a new board member, I learned a lot during this strike. It was my first strike on the management side, so that was quite a new learning experience. Teachers always want to learn, right? I was a former teacher. I certainly learned a lot. I have heard that a Chinese curse is, "May your life be interesting." Well, it's been very interesting. I have been able to get to know my fellow board members much faster than would have happened without the negotiations. We met almost every day for four weeks under stressful circumstances. That is a way to really get to know someone, and I can honestly say that I am very impressed with everyone's intelligence, persistence, and honesty, and kindness. I have also met with PPS staff on nightly Zoom calls and in actual negotiating sessions. Again, I would not have known them so well without the strike. They have worked to exhaustion as they have brought our students back to class. And I'm sure that the PAT team experienced that same feeling. Email and texts were abundant and often negative, but some of them had good ideas that will help me as I negotiate my place on the board. I had one from a substitute teacher who was willing to meet with me to discuss differences between the schools where she had subbed. She will be a great resource to hear about what is working and what needs improvement in our system. It was good to hear over and over again how much our teachers are loved and how important they are to the emotional, as well as the educational well-being of our students. Parents and students provided detailed observations of teachers' needs. They really knew their teachers. I heard how important the school day is to people with special needs. I also found out a lot about myself. I already knew that I did not like to be criticized, that I liked to be liked, who doesn't? I was a kindergarten, first, and second grade teacher. Everybody likes their teacher at this level. But, are there any in this room, by the way? Yay, 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 yay. But I also found out that I was okay when I was not liked. If I was criticized, I could brush it off, if I was doing what I thought was right. It's time to move forward to provide the best education that we can for every student. The one thing that I know for certain is that every member of this board cares about giving every child in the district the best chance for a good education that they can. I'm sure that the teachers feel the same way. On the evening after the tentative agreement was signed, I happened to come across a Greek proverb that made me think of teachers. It says, "A society grows great when old men plant trees under whose shade they know they will never sit." I'm going to say that again. A society grows great when old men plant trees under whose shade they know they will never sit. That made me think of teachers and their contribution to society. We don't really know what happens to most of the students for whom we care. We may never see them again. They certainly will not give us any material wealth, but we hope that our hard work will help each student become a positive member of society and help that society to grow great. So here's to our teachers. Welcome back to the classroom. You were sorely missed.
Thanks, that was great. So the one thing I just wanted to really, I mean, everybody has already said everything that really needs to be said. I just want to thank our board for really being unwavering in the face of intimidation, in the face of harassment, Trump-like tactics that was used, vandalism. And we continue to, continue to push forward for our belief in our kids. And I just want to say thank you guys for that. And I just want to let everyone know that as long as we here for this time, we're going to always do what we feel is best for our kids, no matter what happens or what comes. Sorry, spray paint don't intimidate me. No, that doesn't intimidate me. And so if that's the tactics that wants to be used, or calling my phone 1,300, 1,400 times, I'm not saying, I'm not, I'm talking to whoever is saying it. Well, you guys in the audience. So, and also, the silence that, that happens in that as well. You know, when, when people don't speak up against things like that, it condones things like that. And so I just wanted to make sure that I appreciate every one of my board members here. I appreciate the thousands of calls I've gotten for our support of what has happened, the neighbors who have came over to watch over my house. I just want to appreciate everyone out there for doing that. And that's all I got to say. So we'll go ahead and get to the vote.
Have you figured out the calendar thing yet?
I think we're going to vote on everything as it is, calendar as it is, and then what we're going to do is provide direction to the, to the team to look at different days. So that's, that's where it's at. So when you vote yes, you will be voting yes on the contract, you will be voting yes on the calendar as it sits today. The direction that we give after that vote will be to move the team to look at doing something different so that we can get this done and we can go on with the next part of business. So I just want to be crystal clear on what this, what this yes is.
All right. All in favor indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed? All right, here ain't no abstentions. The resolution passes 7-0. All right, that's it. Meeting adjourned.